Welcome to the first school committee meeting of the academic year 2016-17. Cindy Starks will not be with us today. She has unfortunately broken her wrist and we wish her a speedy recovery. Ms. Johnson is also not with us today, which means we will defer our discussion of monthly reports and financial issues until another meeting. We have some artwork today. We have, over here, we have, "We're Going to the Zoo." Preschool one had a roaring good time with our zoo theme. The preschoolers enjoyed reading books such as Good Night Gorilla by Peggy Rathman and Going to the Zoo by Tom Paxton. This display represents several animals that we incorporated throughout our zoo unit. We use different art mediums such as sand, marble paint, and feathers to complete each of the art projects. Moving over here, we have the group of strawberries. It's artwork by PS2, Ms. Ferrante's class. This lesson is designed to introduce predicting as a reading strategy to primary students using the book The Little Mouse, The Red Right Strawberry, and The Big Hungry Bear by Dawn and Audrey Wood. In this lesson, students make and refine predictions. Students should have some experience making guesses and making predictions about events that are not story-related. As students develop their skills in making predictions, they learn to modify or change their predictions based on information from the text. Then, the students made puffy paint strawberries. A lot of fun all around. Over in the back wall, we have Layers of Spring Colors, Preschool four. All the students in my class did this project. It was a group effort. We used acrylic paint, a white easel, and spider rings to create this piece. Each student chose a few different colors, dabbed the spider ring in the paint, and made impressions of the ring onto the easel. After several days, they covered the entire easel with all of these beautiful colors. Enjoy. In the back as well, Preschool three, we read the book A Color of His Own by Leo Leoni. The story begins by introducing familiar animals and illustrating their color. Elephants are gray, gulfas are red, pears are green, et cetera. It states that all animals have colors of their own except for the chameleon. On the lemon, they are yellow; in the heather, they are purple; and on the tiger, they are striped. One day, the chameleon has an idea. If I stand a green leaf forever, I will have a color of my own. This is a fun preschool book, but it also deals with some very adult themes. In the end, the chameleon meets up with another chameleon and decides to travel and change together and thus living happily ever after. Our art is a children's interpretation of the story. And over here, Preschool five, fireworks. The children showed their Fourth of July excitement in this art project. They used finger paints with paint scrapers. Then they added glitter and confetti to make the background sky. The shooting rockets firecrackers were added with beads, spin art, and magic noodles for a fun 3D effect. Enjoy. So, it's always great to see the amazing output of our students, our young students. So, we're first, let me just actually give a quick overview of what's going to happen today. Most of the meeting today is updates, and that seems completely fitting for our first meeting. But our next thing on the agenda is public participation, and I didn't see any names. Is there any public participation? There isn't. Okay. Okay, so, oh, actually, so we have a slight change in, for the report about the building projects. Is that, I'll turn to the service, Dr. Boddy.
Well, we could just go right into superintendent's report.
Okay. Were we going to do?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I was planning to start out with just an opening day, but this evening, Rob Usula, who is our owners' project manager for the Stratton project, for the Thompson modulators, and now for the Gibbs project, offered to come and give you an update. And I said to him that, while I was planning to do the update, you're going to get a much more in-depth overview of what's going on with those projects. It's been a very intense last month in particular as we've tried to get everything completed. And I want to compliment Rob because he's really stayed on it to make sure that everything was done in order that we were going to be able to open. And so, I would like to invite Rob up to the microphone, and he could just give the report, and then I'll go, I'll defer to talking about opening day and all the other opening activities till after that. That way, he can go home.
That'd be great. Welcome, Rob. And then we'll go to questions on those issues.
Good evening. My name is Rob Usula. I'm a senior project manager with NV5 Company, where the owners' project manager, as Kathy just said, for the Stratton project, the Thompson modulators, and now the Gibbs School project. An update on the Stratton School project. The modulators are open on August 29th. A certificate of occupancy was issued by the building department. Prior to that, the fire department walked through. All the different town departments signed off. And so, they got their occupancy permit. On the 23rd of August, all the materials that were being temporarily held in the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and the kindergarten rooms up at Stratton were moved into the new modular classrooms along with all the furniture. And then, the next day, on the 24th, the teachers were allowed in to set up their classrooms and be ready for school. I want to thank the Arlington Department of Public Works as well, who built the temporary staff parking lot adjacent to the new modulators, as well as striped that lot and did a last-minute striping of a new drop-off area for parents and special education students in the existing parking lot in front of the Stratton School. In terms of the renovation of the school itself, the contractor, GNR Construction, is finishing up demolition inside the building. They've installed a new boiler. They're installing new hot water heaters. The new roofing has started. They're finishing up some abatement of some asbestos pipe fittings and some miscellaneous work inside the building. And right now, they're working on underground and underslab utilities for the new kitchen and all the new bathrooms and all the new plumbing throughout the building. Right now, they're approximately 25 percent through construction. Scheduled to finish up next August. The Thompson modulators, we kind of sweated out waiting for Eversource to arrive to connect power. They did arrive last Monday on the 29th. They tied in power, which was good because the fire department came out the next day to check the fire alarm system and all of that. The building inspector came out that day too, did a final inspection, issued a certificate of occupancy. The mods were clean. The floors were waxed, and it was up and open for the opening of school. In terms of the Gibbs project, the designer selection committee of the permanent town building committee interviewed four firms on August 11th and narrowed that down to two firms, DRA and Feingold Alexander Architects. After a second round of interviews, Feingold Alexander was selected to be the architect for the Gibbs School project. We actually had a kickoff meeting yesterday with Kathy and the Feingold Alexander team, their educational planner, and Eileen Wood, the interim principal of the middle school, was there in attendance too. And we'll be scheduling some additional meetings with department heads, some teachers, and parents to let them know as the design progresses what's going to be happening. The permanent town building committee on Tuesday night also approved proceeding, procuring the construction part of the project as a, what's called, CM@Risk project. In 2004, the state legislature under construction reform approved using CM@Risk, a process where you hire a contractor early in the design phase instead of waiting, finishing the design, putting it out to bid, going with the lowest bidder. In this case, you bring a pre-qualify, you pre-qualify contractors, bring them onboard early, so you get the benefit of their input, reviewing the plans before they go into construction. They will do construction cost estimates as well as we will do check estimates to make sure the numbers all agree. They will contribute things like constructability. I have an easier way to build this. I have a quicker way to build this. So, you take advantage of the architect's input, the contractor's input, and our input to get a, generally, a project that's done in less amount of time than a general design bid-build project. So, part of that process is we file an application with the office of the inspector general, who has to review on behalf of the town, do we have the capability between the town and the owners' project manager and the architect to do this process. And Feingold Alexander has done multiple projects with this. My office has done, I think, over 25 projects like this over the last 10 years. I've personally done about four projects in the last five years using CM@Risk. So, we all have a lot of experience using this, and we all frankly endorse this as a better way to do public construction. So, that application is going in, and today I submitted a, to the central register, an advertisement for the request for qualifications for contractors. So, that will come out next Wednesday in the central register. In meantime, we will be calling contractors to let them know this is coming out because we want to get as much participation on the prequalification side as we can. And then, we'll go from there. Any questions?
Questions. Mr. Carden.
So, under that framework, when will the actual project go out for bid?
Probably, well, it's technically not the same as a regular bid. They will bid what they call trade contracts, which is subcontractors' contracts, probably in next March or April. And then, after that, the contractor will sign with the town what's called the GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, which will include those numbers as well as his side of the construction. And again, that's all open book budgeting. We get to see his numbers. We get to see how he broke his numbers down, how he arrived at those numbers and stuff too.
Yeah, I just have a question. So, do you then use more than one contractor during this for prequalification, or is it?
When you do prequalification, they like you to have at least three.
Three, okay.
And then, based on that, there's a prequalification kind of committee that will decide who's the best fit for the guy.
Got it.
And after that, that's basically the only person you deal with. It's not, like public, like, design bid-build, it's not open to any contractor.
Right.
They have to be prequalified to go to the
And it's one of those.
Phase.
Got it. Yes, Mr. Thielman.
Could you just give us the sequencing of the projects, the, when the construction actually begins? I just want to make
The construction for the Gibbs will begin probably next June.
Okay. And then, the Thompson, do we have a, do we have a plan?
Well, Thompson has to go before a town meeting for a vote of appropriation. Even though there was the override vote in June, that money now has to be appropriated. But even before that, the school enrollment task force needs to meet and endorse that recommendation. So, that meeting, I think, is, the first meeting of that committee is scheduled October 5th. And then, special town meeting is the 19th.
And then, so that project?
Then, well, we've, in anticipation, as you know, we went ahead with having a designer do the design on the project. We have selected an owners' project manager, which is the same company that did the original Thompson.
Good.
But in addition to that, I think Permanent Town Building also endorsed going forward with putting the bids out for the construction. And so, assuming the town meeting approved, assuming we have an endorsement from the task force, and then assuming that town meeting votes for it, we will be ready to go.
In October?
In, no, probably October 20th.
Great.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to see.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's the sequence. No, we may not have all of the selections done, I think, on the Thompson construction. It's not, it's not, I'm not clear on that, but I think our operative goal was November 1st, to be able to go. And everything is based on being able to, when I say everything based on, it means opening in September is based on being able to start November 1st.
Thank you.
Yes? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
We are going to have a parent night, and we've scheduled it tentatively for October 27th, but that, no, no, September 27th. In this process with Gibbs, the, while we have a diagram from our HMFA study that shows that we can put all of our programming into the Gibbs building, because that was important to find out, that doesn't mean that it has to be the way that it is currently designed, because it was what would they call, a fit diagram. So, we're going through a process this month of involving a lot of stakeholders in thoughts about this, which the designers are all going to be listening to. And then, at the end of September, begin with putting together their designs. So, we do have a parent forum scheduled, and I will put that out to parents. It's, it is a Tuesday night, I believe, the 27th, and the week before that, we're working on having something with teachers as well. And the educational consultant from Feingold and Alexander will be the facilitator of this, which is something he's done many, many times. Okay.
Will be on the mailing list as well for that?
I will definitely send you, maybe more than one reminder. We'll put it out there.
For me, that's wonderful.
That that's going to happen.
Great.
I just need, before I put it out, I wanted to confirm the teacher date because I think it's important that the teachers meet first. And the board was meeting today. In fact, maybe even Ms. Saracen can tell me, did we have thumbs up going forward with the proposal?
Yes.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So, the thumbs up means that we're going to do an early release day on the 20th, which is an early release day for Odyssean, to do the, it's a voluntary meeting to do the visioning on the Gibbs. And then, a week later, we'll have the evening meeting with parents. And I will put that out to Odyssean parents by Monday.
Are we staying in contact with Needham, their sixth grade program, just for bouncing ideas back and forth?
We will. Definitely.
And the idea that we all seem really positive about that building and the way things are being run over there?
That was an existing building, just like Gibbs is an existing building. I think we, I had, God bless you, we had a lot of important ideas that came up from that meeting. And during this month, I'm going to, you know, circle back with the principal just to, to talk about some takeaway ideas and some suggestions as we try to think of how to be creative with the space.
Thank you.
All right. So, actually, so we have a lot to cover, and I know there'll be questions on some of the stuff. So, if it's okay with you, I'd like to welcome questions sort of as we go along.
Oh, sure. That's fine, because we have lots of different topics. In fact,
Lots of different topics.
In fact, since we're on the topic of building, let me just keep that theme going for a second, if I could. And that is, we're also moving forward with this building, the high school. And there, we are in the first module, and there's been a number of documents that have, are required. In fact, three big ones are due tomorrow. So, we've been working very hard on this last couple of weeks. But we also had to submit in early August, as you know, the committee for the high school. And we had an extraordinary number of people who were interested in being on the committee. We had 49 people, and having read through all of their emails or resumes, we had an amazing array of talented professional people who really wanted to be part of this. So, we selected through that process, and it wasn't easy, I have to tell you. We went, it took a couple of meetings to do this, 10 people that we interviewed. And as a result of that, we actually decided, after further thought and actually some conversations with other districts, to increase the number of community members on that committee to seven. So, we have a committee now of 17, which is a lot. So, the committee has been selected. The work of the committee probably really will not begin until after we get accepted in the feasibility study, which, you know, the earliest, I think, would be the, that meeting in January. So, but it's part of the process. And so, we've had to complete a number of reports, an educational report, an enrollment report, and some reports, and that include, and the enrollment one included building permits, housing permits. It was just a very extensive report in terms of all the activity in the town that might generate student enrollment.
Mr. Haner has a question.
Are we on time with all that to be ready for them?
Well, you came in on us a couple of times today.
Sorry.
We submitted two just before this meeting, and we have a third one to go, and it's going in tomorrow. So, we're exactly on time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Sorry for the interruption.
That was all right. Didn't break our train of thought.
Ken?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms.
If we're going to stay on building projects for one more minute?
Sure. Mr. Carden?
So, if, if we're going to request modulators for either the Hardy or the Odyssean for next year, that's probably going to have to go to the school enrollment task force on October 5th, which means it has to come to us at our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
And, so you know, a placeholder has been put into the warrant
Right.
For this. And I will tell you that the middle school has been working on this. In fact, really trying to think, you know, as creatively as possible, not that we want to have everyone squished in the building, but the fewer modules we can do with creative moving of classrooms is what we want to do. Because, I mean, the original thought about the number was simply a mathematical thought. It didn't take into consideration how you could, you know, create a puzzle there of how people would use the space. And the fewer modulators we can do, one would save the town money, but also would take up less space up there. And, you know, the Odyssean parents, you know, that parking lot is not enough. In fact, we don't really have, it's been a struggle even right now with parking. And we're looking into some ways that we can find some additional parking spaces. So, to have fewer spaces taken up by modulators would be really tough for a year. So, that's what we're working on. All right. Opening. Well, opening day, just save quickly, and then I'm going to go back to what led up to opening day. Opening day was so smooth this year. It was, it was calm in every school. Everything just worked very well. And I've had a number of teachers even tell me that and how great it was. You know, on one hand, you liked a sunny day, but you know, sometimes having a rainy day isn't so bad, you know, because it just adds a little bit of a, a little bit of a, where we're ready to go back to school kind of feeling to it. But it went very well. We had no transportation glitches. We really had virtually no issues at the start of school, which was terrific. But, you don't get there without an immense amount of preparation. And I can tell you, having been in the schools over the last couple of weeks, teachers were in the schools everywhere, setting up their rooms. And particularly at Stratton, because all of their classroom materials were either in long-term storage somewhere, or the boxes for opening were, had to be unpacked. So, they were there for almost a couple of weeks working on this, and they did a wonderful job. But I think that's true all over, all over the district. You, any school you went into, you saw teachers there preparing.
The permanent town building committee had a tour about a week before the teachers started coming back in. And there were a lot of construction things. You were there that day earlier. They were walking around, and it looked like a place, a little worried that it wasn't going to be there. I went back a week later, talking to Mr. Haner about the mock town meeting that we're going to do with the third grade. It looked like a brand-new school. Everything was there. It really looked nice. And the teachers, the excitement of teachers coming back.
Was.
To their credit, I'd like to commend them, and you, for all the work.
Well, there was a lot of work all around, and I commend the teachers because they were such good sports about it too. They're very happy.
We have one more question. Dr. Allison Napi.
Actually, it was also a comment. I got to do the walkthrough for the families at Stratton, and it's gorgeous. It was all set up. It looks nice. The rooms are very spacious.
It's going to be hard to get them out of there next year.
Yeah, actually. I agree.
And ACMI has a lovely video on, I'm sure you can find it on their website, so.
Yes. I sent you the link
Yes.
To the web, to it. And I want to compliment ACMI on that. And also, the advocate did a great, Nick did a great job in, you know, giving a preview of Stratton. And ACMI did a nice video. So, I appreciate the advocate's press on that. I think everybody was very, there's a little nervousness, I think, out there about, well, what is this really going to look like? And it turned out, and I think on the part of teachers too, they were really pleasantly surprised to see what these rooms were. And in fact, they also were very surprised at the size of the rooms, that they thought they were going to be much smaller, and they were going to feel very cramped. And I think that one of the things that Triumph did, the modular company, is put in cabinets, which wasn't in the original design, but it made a big, a big difference in there. So, it was terrific. The building at Thompson was already a building, and pretty much that was ready to go, except it was just touch and go, getting electrified.
Rob didn't share this tonight. There was an issue about getting the electrical connection. And Eversource finally said that they would be out on the 31st. Two crews showed up on the 29th. Didn't know what they were supposed to do. Ruthie Bennett, the town's facilities person, told Karen DeNato, the principal, go stand in front of the truck and don't let them move until I get down there. And when she got down there, there was Karen out front. They got it all connected, and everything worked out well.
Thanks.
Yeah. Rob raced down to make sure that they knew exactly what to do. So, it worked out fine. And then, they came in, and that was a little bit closer to the edge than we would have liked to have been, but it worked out fine. So, all in all, it was great. But the other piece is, and you're going to hear the report from Rob, and how many new teachers we have this year, it's a little bit more than we've had in the past. And he'll talk about that. But the week before last, Marie Janiak is our mentor program coordinator, and she ran, again this year, just a terrific program for our new teachers. Primarily that week was our elementary teachers, giving them a deep look, as much as you can have a deep look in that amount of time, of the curriculum in key areas. And then, we had an opening day meeting for new teachers. And thank Jeff, who both came to that meeting, and also to the opening day on last Wednesday, and he just did a terrific speech. So, thanks, Jeff.
If I may, he made me want to come back and teach. He was very welcoming. He mixed a little humor with it and a lot of strength. It was well done.
Yeah, it was, it was very well done. So, we had, we had the opening for teachers. And then, as I said, on Wednesday, we had our usual opening ceremony. And had a video, which Laura had heard the speaker, Jamie Kaseup, who is the educational guru at Google. And it was, it was, it really played into a lot of the themes that we've had. But interestingly, when we finished the opening day, everyone went off to grade levels or to departments. And special education had a guest this year, and maybe you'd like to just talk a little bit about Tom Hare, because he is really quite a very well-known person in the world of education today.
Right. We were lucky to have Tom Hare, who's a professor at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. But from a special ed perspective, more importantly, he used to be the director of the special ed programming under President Clinton. So, he had a unique perspective on both. He helped with the reauthorization of IDEA back in 97. And so, it was really great to hear him speak. He spoke about ableism, you know, as a community. We've done a lot of work around, you know, diversity and culturally sensitive practices, and we haven't really addressed this idea of ableism. So, we talked to the staff about that, as well as some of the research that really strongly supports, you know, the idea that more, the more time students spend in general education, the greater their outcomes. So, you know, there's, seems to be, you know, the pendulum swings back and forth, but lately, it seems, you know, they'll call for more, you know, sub-separate programming, out-of-district replacements, things like that. But really, the research doesn't, doesn't support that. And, you know, the greater outcomes as far as graduation, secondary education, employment, all those increase with more time spent in general ed, so.
And he was a strong proponent, too, of using technology as an important learning tool.
UDL, Universal Design for Living, and assistive technology to really, you know, it's not just putting kids in a general ed classroom that makes them, you know, have these greater outcomes. It's how do you support them while they're in the general ed classroom? So, we talked about that. And, you know, staff was really excited about it. Would love to maybe continue working with him in some capacity.
Can you just briefly just kind of define ableism?
Ableism, so it's, if you're thinking about racism, homophobia, or anything, it's when, you know, you limit the expectations of a person who has disabilities, you know, based on their status as a person with a disability.
Great.
Mm-hmm. So that was a full department. You had an idea of what went on with special education, but each department also met to discuss curriculum changes or plans for the year. And we also met by grade level at the, at the, at the elementary. So that was a very productive day, and teachers went back to their classrooms in the afternoon. And the next day was full faculty meetings for the entire, for the entire morning. So it was a very, it was a good way to start. I think that the feedback I've had from people when I've been around at schools was they, they thought it was a great opening last week, too. And then, as I said, starting Tuesday, went very well. Do either one of you wanna comment on the opening day? Because I know you were running schools, too.
The thing that, opening day was, I, I spent time at different schools, and, but I, I just wanna address the very first day, the teachers that were here. One of the things I think that we do that's very unique is that the grade-level presentations that were done at the elementary level were done by teachers. They were not being done by outside people or administrators. We have our lead teachers who have gone, are going through our lead teacher program, and I think it ends a lot, adds a lot of credibility to the presentations, and I think it also makes teachers to feel comfortable to provide feedback to the person that's presenting. They, there definitely is a very honest give and take, and I was really impressed by that.
And we can, we'll talk more about teacher leadership later on, too. All right, so enrollment. I guess one of the big surprises this summer was just how many, how many students we were able to, were going to, we are welcoming into the Arlington Public Schools this year. As you know, last year, our kindergarten numbers did not meet what we thought they would meet in terms of the forecast by Dr. McKibben, or for that matter, even our own predictions. But well-made up for it this year. Last year, we had 474 entering kindergarten students, and this year, it's down slightly. It's 558 as of today. So fortunately, they, the, the number of students were across town, but, but the tool of using buffer zones has helped so that, one of the things, when you, when you see the report, which was put into Novus today, it's fairly even across town with respect to the kindergartens, which was an important goal this summer. Other class sizes have gone up as well, because it wasn't just the kindergarten enrollment that went up. I think the, the high school saw a big jump, middle school saw it, every, just about an increase absolutely everywhere. So the number, the chart that you have today, those numbers could change over the next month or so, because we have to go through and do some verification. But one of the things that does happen, and, and I will remind parents next spring, as we go into the summer, that if you're going to move, please let us know. Because what happens is, if we don't get notification, then we assume that the child's returning, we, we, there's no reason why the child would not be in power school, and they're on class list. So over the next couple of weeks, we will be looking at all of that, just to do some, some adjustments. But I think that our process has gotten much, much better over the last year, and I don't expect to see a huge fluctuation. Already, the change from, if I was looking at October 1 numbers last year, we had 5,252 students in the district. We now have an increase of about 4.7 percent, and the total number, K-12, is 5,498. We're almost at 5,500 students. So that's a, that's a, that's a lot. And of course, actually, one of the issues is, it's, it's also a lot in terms of just thinking about materials and desks. And so we have had to do a lot of, you know, quick ordering and, and adjustments to make sure that all of the, all of the students had a desk in our schools. But I think we succeeded in that. I think we're, we're okay.
Mr. Haner?
I've talked to Dr. Boddy about my, one of my concerns about the issue of full-time aides in the kindergarten. I appreciate the economic factor in this, and Dr. Boddy has to look at, balance both, and I shared with her, I'm more into the education aspect of it. The kindergarten is a unique place. It's where the diagno- you make the prescription for the next 12 years, and the kindergarten teacher spends most of his or her day assessing, and it has to be on a one-on-one basis. I really feel that the importance of having full-time aides, good people there, to give the kindergarten teacher the opportunity to do that work successfully. The, I, the investment there, to me, can be, show results in mitigating our dealing with special needs and other issues coming on. So I would ask the committee to consider it. Dr. Boddy has been very good in sharing the input, and I, again, appreciate her need to balance both the educational and the economic aspects of it. But I see this investment with the possibility of having to take something from Peter to pay Paul on this, well worth it. And I'd like the committee to consider it, and Dr. Boddy as well. Thank you.
Do we have, are there any full-time aides? Are there any?
Yes, we have hired some full-time aides. It just depends on what the numbers are, and in some schools, you might have, with four classrooms, you might have two aides that are working full-time, and they're shared in the afternoon. One of the things that the teachers, that I should say, the principals do with kindergarten is that they try very hard to schedule all the specials in the afternoon. And they do that so that the morning, when they have an aide, the mo- the, the aide is there to help with the morning curriculum. So sometimes it's not helpful, I mean, if, if a, a class is already out to art for the afternoon, it's easy to share a teaching assistant, because the teaching assistant doesn't go to art class. So we have looked at this very carefully, and we will continue to look at it. We're still enrolling students. So we will look at it very carefully, and the principals, I assure you, are not shy in asking for support and what, what they, what they need. But just to remind everybody, last year, our halftime kindergarten TAs were funded by the kindergarten grant. And anticipating that this might go away, and, and valuing having halftime TAs, we made the decision to put those aides into our operating budget, which in turn was a, and you all supported that idea, which was an important decision in terms of the effect it had on other things we could've done that we didn't do, because we valued that so highly. So we didn't even have, you know, when we, the year before, we didn't have full-time TAs either, which would've been out of the operating budget. So this time, it would be not only the halftime out of the operating budget, but if you add any others, it's, it's a full-time, you know, on the operating.
Mr. Schlickman had something.
So we're up about 194 students from last year, give or take. Obviously, because this got loaded into Novus today, you know, I've just taken a quick glance at it. The, the one thing that just catches my attention is, is the freshman class at the high school. Is that a little larger than we expected?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not.
I'm sort of doing the math here compared to last year's eighth grade, and if we had kids go off to Minuteman, that must've been totally offset by new kids coming in.
It was. They had a, a big influx of students into the high school. One of the deans, I think, told me that they had 80, 80 new students that were, that arrived. In fact, one of these classes, and I, I think it was a junior class, was in the 200s earlier this summer. I think it was a junior class, but no, it's been a big, a big change.
So we had 336 in the eighth grade last year, and we're showing 383 in, in, oops, no.
Oh, 338.
338 in the freshman class this year. So we have two more kids this year in grade nine than we had in grade eight last year, and we, I'd assume we sent our usual 30 kids off to Minuteman.
We did. Yeah, no, we had a big, we had a big increase. It was across the whole district, these increase. And today, I came in, I met a young 10th-grade girl who, this was, she just started and was lost. She was new to the school, too. So, I mean, it's not even just the freshman class, it's just across the board. I know that they've had a number of new students. But overall, I would say that I'm, I'm pleased that we don't have any super-large classes. I think we've, this year, compared to what happened last year, our highest one right now is we, it did creep up a bit at, in one, in one class at Dallin. But overall, it's, it's not as bad as it could've been with the increases.
Okay, Mr. Haner had one more thing.
I just wanted to mention that 84 of those new students, Mr. Schlickman, are in the kindergarten alone. Okay? And if I, going forward, could we have, down at the bottom, the capacity of the buildings, what they're supposedly supposed to be? In other words? Well, it's, it's what the building was supposedly built for.
I can do that.
Thank you.
That's not an issue, but I'm not sure it's that helpful. And the reason why is that when you talk about the design capacity of a building, you're talking about your assumption of the number of students in a classroom. And that's how MSBA does it. They assume, so for example, when we get to the high school, when we go through the enrollment process, they will assume that, I think it's 23, is that they would have for a homeroom. So, so when you get the design number, it's, it's, it's what the assumption was per classroom. Now, does that mean if a classroom was designed for 22, that 24 is? You see, that therein lies the issue.
I'm just, I think it's, especially at the Odyssean, it's very important. We, we've exceeded MSBA, our needs, and everything else at Odyssean right now.
Oh, we have. And I take my hat off to the, our new principal and the whole staff this summer trying, and a lot of people at this table helping with this as well. Just thinking about how to redesign what we needed to do in order to get another half cluster of the eighth grade in. We went through multiple draft plans. And so lots of compliments into, well, I was gonna get to that, but I'll say it right now, to our maintenance department. The number of projects we did this summer was astounding, and they got them all done. And Odyssean's a really good example that the whole mezzanine area where art was, where art is, had to be reconfigured, so that's where the half cluster is for eighth grade. And so we had to re-change, we had to change where the lab was, we had to get a sink in, we had to redo the, the rooms, move some programs downstairs, we had to move special ed. So there was a lot of moving parts there, and trying to figure out where everybody was gonna be placed. Every inch of that school is being used very thoughtfully, I have to say. But it was a, it was quite a effort to, Laura's shaking her hands, yes, it was, involving lots of people.
Mr. Carden has a, has a question.
Yeah, so I, I just counter to what Mr. Haner said. I think we have to be very careful about, when we put out numbers, that they be good numbers. And we've had, you know, so many different numbers about capacity of school, design capacity. There isn't, for a lot of these schools, there isn't one number that we can point to as the design capacity. And even if you do, if you take Dallin, for example, that was designed, that school was designed with a computer room and a science room. Those have now been converted. So is the design capacity, considering that it's supposed to have a computer room and a science room, or is it a design capacity based on the number of rooms times 22 students? So I think those numbers are so uncertain that I don't really wanna see them repeated on an official document over and over again.
What I can get for everyone is the design capacity, so you just have it as a reference. And we could, we could pull that up for them.
So actually, I have a, a question about the new families. I know we once talked about having sort of any welcome packet to new families coming at the higher levels grades, because they're often sort of more lost when they enter into... Is that in place yet? Is that in production?
They're working on it, but because of the, as you heard, the number of new enrollments and having a new enrollment system this summer, that took up the vast majority of their time. But as that settles out, they'll go back to it.
So we don't have that done yet?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we have some information, but not what, I should say, not what we'd like to have.
Got it.
It was a prototype back at the beginning of summer, but, but one of the things that, I guess we shouldn't have been surprised at, is well, once we opened the opportunity for online registration, that, that's what, how people have registered their children, and people are much more adept these days of, you know, scanning, uploading, all of the relevant documents. So I would say the vast majority, I would hesitate what the percent was, but maybe I could say, maybe close to 90%, if not more.
Oh, yes.
If not more.
At kindergarten.
Done all electronically. So they're not coming into the registration office to get packets.
Right, right.
So that's, we think this.
Yeah, right. Yeah, okay, great.
All right, so maybe it's a good time for, for Rob to talk about the hiring?
Sure. So we've had a very busy summer in my office and on the sixth floor, and in all the schools. The hiring starts when there's a vacancy, when there's either a, a new position or a vacated, a vacated position. And we post a position, hiring committees are formed at the schools or in departments, and, you know, it started in the spring last year and continued, it continues till, through today, where over the summer, teachers would come in and do, participate on committees to participate in hiring, and the principals and all the special ed staff and coordinators and curriculum directors. So it's been very busy. So first, we have some new administrators. As you know, we have an interim principal at Odyssean this year. Eileen Woods is back in Arlington. We have a new special education coordinator at the Odyssean, because we, we did have a departure at the end of the past school year. The new, that, that person had been a team chair at the elementary level and has been in the district for several years. We have two new elementary special ed coordinators who are new to the district, and are, we have a new out-of-district special edic- education coordinator who had, that's Chris Carlson, who had been one of our elementary coordinators for the past several years. As of today, we have 57 new teachers, nurses, team chair specialists. These are positions covered by the AEA Unit A Bargaining Unit. It's a big number for this year. I mean, it's a little bit more, I think, than we've had in the past couple of years. Forty-three are replacing teachers who resigned, retired, moved to another position, or on a full-year leave. We have had some shifting, which has created some openings, where some people, where vacancies occur, and some people are moving from one position to another, such as the team chair positions. We had a couple of team chair positions open up at the elementary, and we had people already in the district move into those positions. We have 14 new positions, some are partial FTEs. We mentioned the half cluster at Odyssean. There's two new teachers here, although both of those teachers had worked here last year as long-term subs at the Odyssean and had experience at the school, and were well-known and, and performed well last year in their long-term substitute positions. And we had some grade-level increases in other FTE needs. We, again, as always, we have hired from within. Eighteen of the people have been teaching assistants, or building subs, or substitutes in Arlington. Several had done student teaching and, and long-term substitutes, as we, as we said. Dr. Boddy also men- already mentioned the orientation and mentoring that Marie Janiak has put together so, so well. And really, it's Marie and all of the lead teachers and curriculum directors really work hard to make sure that our new teachers are trained well in everything that they need to be, as much as they can be, in a few days right before the school year starts. And our, these teachers coming in have varying levels of experience. Some are new out of, out of school, out of grad school. Some have taught in other districts and have a little more experience. I have a breakdown of new hires by school. This, again, this is changing a little bit day to day. We still have a, a few open positions that haven't been filled yet in, in the AEA Bargaining Unit. We've also hired a lot of new teaching assistants, behavioral support personnel, tutors. This number is actually updated, but it's not updated on the, on the, what you have, but it's, I think, as of today, it's 38 new people, and the hiring process continues. Teaching assistants are always hired a little bit later, just because it's a, it's just a, it's a more volatile position. A lot of the people in the teaching assistant positions are, have been studying to become teachers, are licensed teachers, are looking for teaching positions, and as positions open up, either in Arlington or in other districts, it creates an effect that we create vacancies and have to replace them. vacancies and have to replace them. We have added a few full-time kindergarten aides, some class size needs and building substitutes. As of this slide, seven that I counted had master's degree and others are in master's programs, there might be some more who have master's degrees now that we've hired. So we have very well-educated teaching assistants in this district. We also have a program for the past couple of years, our special education coordinators have worked with local colleges to have a combined internship hiring process, where we're hiring TAs as interns, so they're actually hired at a little bit lower salary because they're getting, it's part of their, their program, and they're getting a paid internship for the whole year to work in one of our schools. And we have several in the district this year with, through Wheelock College. And that's it, I just want to also, as always, thank, let's move back, thank everyone, again, all the people at the schools, all the hiring teams and the principals and curriculum directors and special ed coordinators, who worked so hard all summer to get people in the district, the people on this floor who do a lot of work. Our payroll department has been very busy, as you know, we've have, right now, an interim payroll manager, an acting payroll manager, Connie Russell, who's been in the payroll department for several years, as Julie McLaughlin retired at the end of the last fiscal year. And we have two relatively new payroll people in our department, Mike Troyano and Vicky Sousa, who've been working, they've all been working very hard, long hours. The superintendent's office, Maria Lalacata, has been typing letters like crazy every day, it's been very busy. Kelly Pigott in my office has been working with benefit enrollment and getting everyone set up on our evaluation system and in our, on ASOP and all of the systems we need to have done, and it's just taken, it's a lot of time, a lot of long hours that people are working, and our business office and everyone, it's just hard, I don't wanna leave anyone out, but everyone's been working very hard. I also wanna mention that we are still looking for certain positions, we have postings on our website for any open positions, we still have a few teaching assistant positions to fill, so if anyone is watching and is, and those people who are interested, the other thing that we really are looking for this year are substitute teachers, substitute traffic supervisors or substitute crossing guards. We do have a need for some substitutes in that area, as we're pretty much at capacity with our crossing guards all working in, in, at the spots, and we need some substitutes who would be willing to come in and work in those spots on relatively short notice. And then, we, and those are just morning and afternoon positions, and there would be some training that you would get from Corey Reto in the police department, and, and substitute secretaries in our schools, we have a need for that as well, so if anyone knows, anyone, let me know.
Could, may I?
Yeah, Mr. Hayner.
I'd like to consider in the upcoming budget to investigate increasing substitute teacher compensation. I think that may be part of the issue, drawing substitutes. We cannot compete with the city of Cambridge, I know that, but we need to, we need to become competitive.
From my, from just anecdotally, my conversations with other HR directors in other school districts, they all have an issue, no matter what they're paying, it's hard to find substitutes right now, and I, yes, we, we could raise our substitute rates, that might help a little bit, but I, I don't think it would solve every problem.
You don't either, but if your person has a choice to come here or get a considerable difference.
And there are people who solve it in many different districts, and, you know, if we have an opening on a day that another district that pays more has an opening, they'll take the other district.
We're in the same system, that's part of the issue.
What we've found over the years is that it's a, it's a pretty telltale sign of the state of the economy. When the economy wasn't doing well, we had a plethora. So, that, that probably is good news at a macro level. You might wanna mention more about the traffic supervisors, we, because we, we've had to put two additional ones on this.
So we've added one at the Stratton, right on Mountain, right in front of the entrance to the modular there, so there's, that, there wasn't a traffic supervisor there the past couple of years, but now with the construction and with the change in the entrance, there is one there. And right now, we have one at the Thompson, right on Everett and University, right near the entrance to the, the Thompson and near where the modulators are there. And I think the reaction to those have been, have been favorable, so. The other thing I wanted to mention is, thank The Advocate for publishing, I think in this week's paper, there's a, a spread on some of our new teachers in town, so if you wanna look and get some information, just a few of the newly hired teachers in the district, you can get.
That's really fun.
Look at that.
Dr. Bodie?
Can they exit from the modular units at Stratton out onto Pheasant Street? Do they exit out on that side?
Yes.
I'm just concerned, the, the, maybe a need for a traffic supervisor there. I'm pretty sure it's a one-way street, but I don't know if there's a need, but with kids coming across, they're very, it doesn't have that big spans, and it's very difficult to see now with the modular units there, ahead of time with traffic coming up.
They're set, the modular is set back considerably from.
But there's also a chain link fence that wasn't there before.
Well, we'll see how.
I'm just concerned, it may not be necessary.
We, we'll see.
I was under the impression they were all exiting onto Mountain Street, but they, and that exit was only gonna be used for emergencies, so I could make.
Well, plans changed over the summer in terms of the.
Absolutely.
The whole, a lot of things about the project, but we'll see how they go.
I'd ask you to look at it, that's all.
Believe me, I'm sure that we'll hear if it becomes an issue. But the Stratton one, or the Thompson one, we were initially going to be putting the person on temporarily, but it's so congested there, and speaking of Thompson, in terms of congestion and traffic, Mr. Hayner and I have talked about this a couple of times this summer, one of, one of the concerns, and this is probably one of the reasons why we would also keep the traffic supervisor there, at least for the time being, when people are coming from the Medford area down River Street to avoid the stoplight, they will take a left on one of the side streets and then come down, come down Everett. So, it's, it's a little bit more congested than it would even be from the, the parents that are there. But one thing they were also seeing at Thompson, and Officer Ruto and I have talked about it this summer, in fact, I sent you a copy of the letter that we sent to the Board of Selectmen, to have the Board of Selectmen consider making Purcell, which is a one-way street between Everett and North Union, one-way going east. I think that that's how it probably should be anyway, but as we potentially face all of this new construction, at the back on the, on the North Union-Purcell corner, I think to consider having it both ways would be just a logjam. Teachers have to park along Purcell, and then if a parent parks along the opposite side, you barely can get another car down the center, and, so that's a real problem. So, I, I think we're going to be on the agenda Monday, that's my understanding anyway. So we'll see how that goes.
Hold on one second, Mr. Carden?
Just going back to the hiring report, two questions. One is, I don't know if it's possible to get a breakdown of like the number of resignations versus retirements, and whether that's.
It is possible, yeah.
Whether that's, I'm actually interested in the trend over the last few years, is that something that we need, as a district, we should be looking at, or is it just normal churn?
So, actually, Nick sent me an email earlier this week asking me for the same, same information, and I really was trying to, hadn't had time to really do a deep dive into the, the data, and to this afternoon, I spent a little bit of time looking at it, I don't have, we had more resignations this year, you know, if you look from the past, you know, from the beginning of last school year until the end of the summer, were significantly higher in terms of resignations than we were in the same comparable time period a year before. There are many reasons for that, I've had exit interviews with a lot of the teachers, most of the teachers departing, not everyone, but many of them. There's multiple reasons for it, it's kind of a coincidentally, there's, this year, we've had several teachers who have moved out of town because they're either trailing a spouse who's being transferred or getting a different opportunity in another, in another state. So we've had several in that situation, we've actually had several teachers who took jobs closer to where they lived to cut down on very long commutes. We've had some teachers in this district who drive a long way to get here, they've really liked working in Arlington, but for many reasons, for family reasons or other reasons, they've decided to look for jobs closer to home. And there are some people who've left for districts that pay more, pay more, there may be some, some who've had dissatisfaction with their jobs that they had here and were looking for something different. We've had a few people leave education altogether for different reasons. So there's, there is, there's a variety of reasons, I can get you that, the, the numbers, I can't go into every specific about the reasons, but it, it varies. And then, the retirements are pretty consistent the last couple of years, I think we had eight or nine, seven to nine in the past couple of years, from the teacher's side, at the most, I mean, there haven't been a lot, and I don't think in the next few years we're gonna see a lot, big numbers of retirements, we'll have a few each year, but we don't have, we're not in a position right now as a district where we have a lot of teachers ready to retire.
The, the, the second question was more specifically related to special education, so out of the, you know, administrators, we've got three out of six coordinators that are new to the district, one who's who changed positions, so four out of six, have at least three team chairs, that I'm counting, that are new out of seven or so, so, and a significant number of teachers as well throughout the district, so is that, is there any special reason for this churn, or is this?
The coordinators, we added the out-of-district position, so the need for three really was created by just adding a position. One of the coordinators retired and is subsequently moving out of state, and another coordinator had left for some of the reasons you described, you know. So, it was really kind of a one add, really, in that regard. And as far as the team chairs, one of them became a coordinator, so that created that issue. We had another one leave for a higher-paying district in the close vicinity to us. And, you know, some were other personnel decisions that we made that we can't really speak to. So there was kind of a trickle effect, so when one person left, it created a vacancy in that one. You know, and one particular elementary school did have a bit of turnover, but similarly, individuals either went to other positions in the district or moved up in a position which created the vacancy, so.
Sorry, Mr. Schlickman has a question as well.
See, you know, I, you know, I heard a couple of key things, moving to other districts for higher salary and moving to closer-to-home districts, which raises the question of, is it way too expensive for our teachers to live anywhere near Arlington? Which I think is one of the prime issues, and if, and if our teachers are priced out of the housing market anywhere's within a reasonable distance, they, they become susceptible to jobs closer to home.
That may be part of it, it also may be that they don't, I mean, they don't wanna live in Arlington, or they, they want, maybe they are living closer to where they grew up or where they have other family. I, I don't know for sure every, every detail, I just think, and I think there are several of these people who've worked in Arlington, worked in Arlington for several years, because they liked it here, they liked working here, and because of where their families are, you know, in terms of if they have young kids or whatever, they've decided that now it's just, it's become too much for them, and they are set, they live where they live and they're comfortable. I think there's multiple reasons, it might also be that there are some people who would like to live in Arlington who can't, I mean, that's probably valid.
Yeah, 'cause I wonder how much of an affordable housing effort we need to, to direct to people who work for the school department.
Right.
Because, you know, if, if this is hurting our chance to recruit or retain staff, you know, it becomes an additional problem that goes across the street.
Right. I, yeah, that's probably true, I think a lot of our, anecdotally, I don't know for sure, but I think a lot of our younger staff who don't have families yet tend to live in Somerville and Brighton and places like where other younger people who don't have families yet live, and then when, you know, they move out and sometimes people are moving a little bit farther away, where housing might be a little more affordable a few towns over than, and are still commuting to Arlington, I think, and, and some people are finding places in Arlington, it's just, it varies. And we do work with the town when they do have affordable housing opportunities, and we send notices out to our, our staff when there are opportunities for bidding on or lottery sometimes, because those are competitive for people to get some of the affordable housing in Arlington, but our staff is informed of it.
Dr. Allison Empy?
I just wanted to comment that I'm really glad to hear that you're doing the exit interviews and everything. I know when I started, we didn't even have an HR person, and I feel we were losing information as people left and not knowing why, and I think just what you're doing is, the sense that I get is that that's the sign of a fairly healthy workforce, that, you know, yeah, there's always going to be people coming and going, but we're not hearing, they're leaving because they're strong job dissatisfaction or something, or, I mean, maybe they're not talking about that, but.
I will say, I mean, there are, it's, you know, obviously, we have a big staff, we have a big district, not every person who works here is going to, you know, it's either gonna be the right fit or they're gonna love, and there are some people, honestly, who have said that it is job dissatisfaction. But I don't think that's the majority, I think that's a few, and I think there's multiple reasons that people leave, leave the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
It might be helpful to get some comparative data from some of the other HR directors you've worked with to see what the trends are. I, you know, one of the things that struck me when I met the new teachers is that a lot of younger people we hire, and, you know, younger people tend to join a district and then they get married and their spouse moves to, you know, wherever, and they go with them, or they have a child and they wanna take them off. So I don't know, I think there's a lot of life events that, in my own experience in management, that they, they cause turnover that are really no fault of the school, the school district. And, but, so it'd be good to have, just have some comparative data, just like other districts, to see what they're doing. I betcha we're about the same, is a lot of our comparative districts, that's my sense.
And, and then, but then, I think then if you look at some schools, and it varies every year, some schools, I, we didn't hire any new teachers, or very few, and then other schools for, you know, just were a little bit more active in the hiring and have several new teachers, so it, it really varies. And we do have some teachers who've moved grade levels in different schools, I know a couple of schools had a few shifts throughout the summer, and, so, yeah, there's always something changing, that open, tends to open up other positions.
Mr. Hayner?
The, 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 the education today, when I started teaching, teachers found a good job, they stayed there no matter what the distance was or anything. Today, it's, can be very transient.
Right.
And they, they become, if they're in a good field, my son is a chemistry teacher, six different districts over the past twelve years, because different opportunities and different programs, and he was able to do it.
Yeah, I, I think people are more open to changing careers even, and we have, as I said, we've had a few people either leave, stay in their overall profession, like some of, some of our related, a couple of our related service type of providers might be leaving education but still doing, you know, their basic, you know, what they've been trained to do, and other people are leaving, changing careers, so.
Great. Just cognizant of the time, so we want to, we have a bunch more things to, to hear about from Dr. Brad Avon.
All right, the next on the list is the middle school principal search update. Very pleased that Dr. Eileen Woods is, is returning to Arlington to lead Odysseum this year, but we will be planning for a full search for principal. I believe that we'll probably do some posting before the holidays, because it'd be nice to be able to begin the process of interviewing later, and then if we, if need be, we could always open it again, so I have in mind the idea that you potentially could open it again, but we'll see. I think we're in a very strong position in attracting a, a great candidate. But, having said that, I could not be more delighted to have Dr. Woods here, it was just a seamless start to the year, so it was terrific. Dr. Chesson, do you wanna talk a little bit about summer professional development?
Thank you. We had in total about six hundred and eleven days the teachers worked over the summer, that's about three hundred and eighty-four participants. The district spent about eighty thousand dollars in summer. professional development. Um, we are very lucky that, um, over half of that came through grants. And so the district, uh, operational budget paid for about 37.6, which is about usually what we spend. I have, I know that I signed some green sheets today. So we'll probably come 40, 50 is about what we, we budget for out of the operational budget. Some, uh, professional development of note is we have 14 teachers that began a teacher leadership program. Um, and that will be a graduate level course that will go throughout the year for teachers that are looking to be, um, remain in the classroom, but still be leaders in curriculum areas. Um, we also had a, um, beginning of a safe and supportive schools task force, um, that started this summer that will also go, be planning all throughout the year, um, in looking as how we create a cohesive plan, uh, K through 12 for safe and supportive schools. And we also had, um, the leadership teams of each of the elementary schools came and, um, varying numbers. In some schools, they only had like two teachers that were available to come, but the, um, there were several other schools that had five and six teachers who came and they worked as a team and went through a workshop on how to create, uh, collaborative teams that can move a school forward and will be working, um, with the consultant to various degrees, um, throughout the year. So, uh, I feel like between the new curriculum we have, and we have a new math curriculum for K one, we have new science curriculum for four and five, we have, um, redoing the reading and, uh, social studies to have integrated units at all the grades, um, that there was a, quite a substantive amount of work that was done this summer.
And the administrative team also went through professional development this summer. We began, um, our 10 hour workshop, uh, on cultural competency. And, um, I think everyone agrees that it was this, it's been terrific, terrific program. So that is, it was, it was a very busy summer. There was activity everywhere, not to mention the activity of professional development, just the use of our schools. Uh, it is, every year there's more, more and more, um, activities going on. And in the activity column, there was just so many projects. I don't think I'm going to read them all because there was just so many, but you, I think this was put into Novus, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
You've seen all those projects. Uh, it was a substantial amount of work. This was our first full summer with the facilities department. And I, I have to say it has gone very well. Everything was so organized and, and, and laid out in a very, um, planned, planful way and projects got done. It was quite, uh, quite an amazing project. One of, in this building is the preschool. We were able to convert, um, one of the classrooms downstairs, which actually one of the areas which had been offices into another classroom, which is something we've needed for a while. And also the new, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. The new track was installed. And, um, unlike our experience with putting the, the other turf down, people were pretty good about not walking on it because that, that was a little bit more sensitive. Uh, and again, at, at Odison, there was just an enormous amount of work that was done in terms of getting the school retrofitted for, um, using, having more classrooms. One thing that, um, has always been an issue at Bishop is the drainage. And we've really made some headway in that. And that's actually sort of a combination of facilities and DPW. So there's just been a lot of, of, of things that have done and, uh, you know, green activities as well in order to improve the, uh, the energy efficiency of the buildings. So I, I think it went well. And I, I think in part it went well that was we began the planning of it in January and really had a schedule that we, we held to from the very start.
Oh, sorry. Dr. Allison Epi.
I see that there were, there's an item mentioned, remove trees and tree walls, um, that were in obstruction of the Hardy playground. Has the equipment been repaired at the Hardy playground?
Yes. That was one before. Actually, I have a question. At Hardy, are we now done with the envelope repair? I mean, I know that this has been a big issue with things leaking through.
I believe the last, I believe the last of it is done.
It's the last of it is done. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So we've talked a little, uh, quite a bit about all the other building projects. Um, so to technology, and then I actually have some things that are not in here that I wanted to mention.
So August 24th was a very exciting night at Odison. Um, sort of, if you build it, they will come. I think we were all quite surprised about how many students showed up for the BYOD night. Um, we, uh, had hoped that we would get at least the same number that we had last year, which was between 60 and 75. And actually the first night we had 160 people. At one, at point there was a line going out the door. But what's even more impressive is that we're up to 325 students who have made their choice at Odison to bring their own device. And we have more being added every single day. So that was, um, really exciting. I think the way we did it, where we started out with one cluster at Odison and then expanded that to the sixth grade, and then expanded that to sixth grade BYOD, and now have added, um, BYOD for the entire school, has really helped parents to see the benefit that technology can have for their students. Um, we also opened up BYOD at the high school. Um, because high schools, we're not, um, filtering the kids coming in as much because they can get on the guest network. We know, we found out that, which I didn't know, as we were in the process of doing this, that last year we had about 450 students that accessed the guest network on a regular basis at the high school. So what, what was happening is they were coming in with wireless devices, some phones, some iPad, some laptops, and they were accessing the guest network. We now.
Yeah. I was just going to say, doesn't that limit them to be involved in the classwork and stuff like that?
No, I mean, I didn't mean, you know, they're doing it during class when they're not supposed to be doing stuff.
No, I meant to use, no, I meant to use the device for classwork and stuff on the guest network.
It, it limits, um, some of the things they can get at, and it's actually getting more limited. So this way they have to be, want to go on the airplay network, which we can then, um, control and sort of monitor and know. We've cut out video totally from the, um, guest network. So if a teacher is having students watch a video on YouTube or something like that, they can't do that on their own device unless they use their phone and they use 3G, which totally goes around the network. So, um, at the high school level, things are, uh, you know, I, I think that we don't have a real good handle yet on exactly how many students are bringing in, but we'll, we'll know within the next couple of weeks. As this committee found out tonight, we now have what's called Safe Connect when you came in tonight. And it requires, um, the devices that are on the airplay and eventually on guest as well, um, to be registered with the network. So we'll have a better handle on exactly how much. We've actually, um, also doubled our, um, wireless capability. And over the next year, we'll be looking at redoing what's called our network topography in order to develop backup systems. So if one section of the network goes down, then another section will kick in. But that, hopefully that'll be done by the end of the year or, or the beginning of the next school year.
And a lot of compliments to our IT staff. It's another group that just was working long hours, even weekends to make sure that we were up and running. And of course, the big issue is just the, is what's behind the scenes is all of the infrastructure, the, the, the broadband and getting enough, the routers. There's just a lot behind that you don't see, but they work very hard on this. Not to mention all the devices we were, we also were purchasing through capital, um, uh, or even grants from AFS. Um, so they had to do a lot of work just to get those ready too.
I, I have a question. Do we have an idea of how many teachers are intensively using technology in the classroom? Or, you know, how many are, may choose not to?
Um, we're, you know, we're constantly assessing that. I think teachers are all in different places of development. Um, one of the great things that we had at professional development this summer is that we had an, um, an ed camp for technology. So folks could come there and sort of decide, oh, these 10 people want to learn about X. And, uh, we had about a hundred people that came for that. So I, I think that we'll have a better handle as the year goes on and we, um, teachers are going to be more inclined to use technology if they think that kids have it on a regular basis. And I think BYOD will help, help with that. And also the number of devices that we've been putting into the schools.
Another thank you is to High Rock Church. Um, they, they had, I think about a hundred people come in August to do a cleanup around the high school. But in addition to their volunteer work that they've done now, it's the second year, I think, or maybe third year in a row, they've done this. They've also dedicated some of their office space for our mill book program, which we don't have capacity in the building for. But unfortunately this year they've, they're going to need, need that. And so we worked this summer with the planning board to be able to use some of the space vacated by, uh, one of the agencies over at the, um, over at the senior center. And, um, so our mill book program is going to be there for the year because ACA, which has entered into an agreement with, with the board, will be, after they, after their lease ends in, at Gibbs, they will be taking up a lease there. But meanwhile, we had a year where we're going to be able to have our programs in that space. And it's wonderful. It's, it's air conditioned. That was a plus. But, but we'll have to be thinking this year as to what will happen after that. Uh, and of course, that's one of the things that even when I was filling out these forms, you know, you know, one of the questions they ask you, are there programs that you have that you can't even house in your school? And the answer is yes, there is. And so, um, I'm not sure we can, we certainly aren't going to be able to house it here, but we have to think about where we're going to house it. Um, so, you know, one of the things that I think that you're also aware about, and the high school is very proud, is the, all the different high rankings they've, they've had in the last, uh, last couple of weeks. But I think, um, you know, the rankings can vary from whatever, you know, newspaper or magazine or is doing it. But the fact of the matter is no matter which one it is, Arlington High School is being ranked, uh, very high. And in fact, we had a request today from a magazine to have another interview about what, what we do. So, uh, what we're, what we're doing so well, and that's, it's really about the teachers and the students of what we're doing well. So I want to congratulate the high school, but it's really a K-12. The kids come prepared to the high school and, uh, are, are just, um, excelling after that. So, uh, just a couple of other things. Speaking of our excelling students and our excelling teachers, um, one of the, um, middle school teachers, Juliana Keys, sent me, um, an interesting little note. And I, I told her, I just have to share this with you today. She's actually sharing it with the community. Uh, one of her students went to Japan this summer. And, uh, one of the places they were visiting was the Osaka Castle. And this is a castle that happened to be commissioned by Toyoda Tomy, uh, Hidayoshi, I think is how you say his name. But at any rate, when they arrived, there was an interview team from one of the news channels, they're up there, who were targeting foreigners to ask some questions about what, um, uh, about, um, the particular person, Hidayo, Hidayashi, I think it's Hidayashi for the Japanese TV. And they asked her lots of questions and she knew the answer to all of them. And so I'm sure that they were, she said she, they were amazed. But then that speaks to the fact that we do teach geography in our schools. And we teach more than geography. This, so she was, she was telling her teacher, uh, how proud she felt that she was able to do that. And, and, you know, we had, as I was talking about opening, um, one, every, every, every principal does something through, goes through some kind of opening activity. We did it with administrative teams. Everybody does that. Um, and one of the things they were doing at Odison this year, and I just want to share a few things. Um, they did, um, this, what do you hope for this year? And, and teachers wrote down on these pieces of paper what they wanted to do. And they're on display in the lobby. I, I don't know if they're on display tonight, but I was reading some of them and I just pulled a few off. There were, every, every faculty member did this, but it gives you an idea of who our faculty are. And so let me just read a couple of what they hope for. To listen, not just, uh, not to, to listen, not just hear. All kids feel comfortable here. To really get to know the students. That all students feel part of a positive and caring community. Have students be excited. To inspire creativity and passion for learning. And, and there was just more and more of, of this type of comment. So this is what our teachers are hoping for this year. And, um, you know, they're starting this and I'm quite confident that they will see the success in all of this as they go through the year. So I think we're off to a wonderful start and, um, it's really through a whole network of teaming. I mean, you, you just can't do this without everybody doing a part of it. And you've heard some of it tonight, but it's, it's more than, it's, it's more than just, um, those of us sitting here at this table. So anyway, that's the, the report.
Great. Thank you. Um, only about 12 minutes over. So.
Not bad.
Not bad. Um, next thing on our agenda is the timeline and process for the superintendent evaluation. And actually the reason I put this on is just to have a discussion with you guys, but what we want things to look like. Um, September 30th is the deadline according to our bylaws or whatever, you know, policies, um, for a superintendent to give us the material for us to look at. Um, then last spring, we had discussed that we wanted to have some sort of retreat. Now that can be a weekend retreat or it could actually even be, um, one of the things we've discussed is having the early part of a meeting in a retreat mode, not in this room, um, to discuss sort of what we've seen, what we're looking for. Um, I think last year there was a sense that we were, we wanted to request certain documents and we, it was sort of maybe too late. Um, and so I wanted to get your feeling, but when, what, when you'd like to do that. What we have is, um, we have the entire month of October to sort of digest what the superintendent has given us and request more, you know, before we do our evaluation. So, um, the 13th and 27th are meetings. So I guess let me just throw it out to you. What, what, do you feel like we should do something beginning of a meeting? Do you want something longer in a weekend or something like that? Dr. Allison Epi.
I'm a little confused. Was the retreat, weren't we thinking that was for what, not this evaluation, that's the September 30th, but the next one?
Um, you mean for the next year?
Yeah, for figuring out what we want for the next year.
Um, is that what you were saying?
I, I thought that and establishing the goals and everything.
Okay. Um, well, we certainly have retreated the, sort of spring, we talked about the goals and what we're looking for. And there was a feeling that we wanted to retreat in the fall as well, some sort of, that's what I got sense of. Uh, yeah. Mr. Hayner.
The, in the set, right, right after we do the evaluation, in the past, there was a sit down with the superintendent to establish the goals adjusted from the district goals and stuff. And I, I think for me, part of the confusion is that melding. They should be the same, but for specifics and then bring them to the committee for approval.
Okay. So I'm, I'm actually really confused now.
That's right.
So, so you're saying that after we do the evaluation in November, we'd like to then revisit sort of what we're right and what we're wrong.
That was my understanding. I could be wrong.
Okay. Anyone else have a sense? Cause I?
Well, my memory is that, and this, I should have done a little more research, but I think we talked about the fact that we wanted to just make sure we got interim report or regular reports on the goals.
Right.
That was the focus. We wanted to make sure that, you know, every couple of months, Kathy was conscious of giving us information on the progress towards the goals.
Okay. So we should.
Or every, I don't know, a couple of months. I don't remember.
We should probably talk about that with the calendar because right now we just have two days. Yeah.
Okay. Two days may be sufficient.
Okay. Um.
For me, we'll put, one of the, one of the aspects originally, Dr. Buddy was setting up a Dropbox to do exactly that. As the things come, we go into the Dropbox.
Right.
That's still being worked on. I mean, my feeling is as soon as something happens at a meeting, a school, if we have a meeting, say in December about budget and it relates to a goal, just using an example. At the end of that meeting, she gives wink to Karen and Karen puts it in the Dropbox and it becomes cumulative. And we have a chance to either look at it on an ongoing basis or wait till September, like some members have indicated, and ask the questions as we go along.
Okay.
Going on. But there's also, as, I'll wait for the calendar part.
Okay. Okay. So let's, I mean, I guess then, so it sounds like we're not looking to do any sort of retreat pre thing in October. Um, why don't we then, um, at least in October, we will have had a chance to, to look at the evidence that's been presented and make requests in the regular public meeting, if there's something else that we'd like to see that, um, yeah. Okay. Mr. Schleppen.
One of the things that I noted last year is we did have a little bit of confusion as to.
Yes.
Which parts of the goals we were targeting within the evaluation. So that, one thing we should be doing is making sure that that portion of the, uh, the tool has the, the specific goals to be evaluated. Cause last year that was blank. And when I did the concatenation last year, there was. And when I did the concatenation last year, there was wide range. And the big note I made to myself-
Yeah.
-to improve things for this year is to make sure that it, within those boxes, we put in the-
Right.
-specific goals and areas that we were evaluating.
Right, okay.
Saying that, that might mean a meeting of the minds to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, well, why don't we-
For an hour, a half hour, or something, I don't know.
Well, that, that can go to the CIA subcommittee as well.
Okay.
Just to, just to arrange the form and pre-populate it in a way.
Okay.
That's all we're doing, is pre-populating.
That's all we're doing, is pre-populating.
Right, pre-populating. So one of the things-
We didn't need to meet, but just, yeah.
Yeah. And one of the things that we talked about last spring is having some more chances for informal meetings, retreat-like meetings, if we needed. So we'll leave that as an open possibility for, but, but it may not, you know, may not be necessary. Okay. Okay, that's clarity from me. Does anybody else want to talk to the goals, anything else that we're missing with the timing? Mr. Hainer?
I got two areas that I'd like to add to the calendar.
Yeah, so let's talk about the calendar, right. Okay.
I want to talk about the calendar.
Okay, so let's, yeah, let's move on to discussion of the calendar. So let me give you some background. During our retreat in the spring, I think the committee reformed its desire, which I think it had before, but hadn't sort of yet been done, to have a standard year-long, flexible calendar, but, but just an, an idea of what does the year look like in the school committee, with, of course, some flexibility. So Dr. Buddy and I worked this summer, we met a couple of times on, on, on just really the preliminary first draft of what that might look like. And what I thought made sense is to do it by month, and that way, just to give us a little bit more flexibility. It wasn't by meeting. So, but it's just a first glance, and I knew there'd be changes. So let's, let's actually talk about what we'd like to add or delete, or, you know, new insights. Yes, Dr. Allison Hainey?
Okay. I'd actually like to speak to the concept of the year-long calendar. 'Cause I think, so this is good, and I think it's good for us to be thinking ahead in that way, but this is actually kind of not quite what, when we had talked about in the governance meetings, what the year-long calendar was meant to be.
Okay.
My understanding from having had to hash it out with Nancy Walzer and trying to really get it down and put it on paper, is that what the year-long calendar is trying to do is actually take our goals, the, the current goals, and then from them, figure out what we want the kind of product to show that the goals have been completed is going to be, whether it's going to be a report, a presentation, or something. So you need to know what that is, and then, when is that going to happen?
Mm-hmm.
And then that's like, that's kind of the really important parts to put in the calendar. And then everything else gets kind of fit in around those things.
Okay.
And it, you know, going back to the retreat that maybe isn't a retreat-
Yeah, yeah.
That, figuring out what those products or, or, you know, whatever, deliverables, yes.
Yep.
Whatever you want to call them. Figuring out what those are and when they should be done, either could be something just done by the chair with, in consultation with the superintendent, or it could be something that we could discuss at a retreat.
Okay.
But, so when I look at this, this is good, but this is actually much more in the weeds than, than Nancy would have us be. She was really looking for us hitting, making sure we're getting our goals done and that we're learning about them, and then you try and spread them out so everything isn't all due in June.
Right, right.
Because then it's just crazy.
Right. Actually, I did actually pass this by Nancy Walzer, and she had, she actually only had a small tweak to it.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that, that you're not absolutely right, that her initial vision was something really different.
Yeah, that's, this is how she was conveying it then.
I, I think this thing is helpful for chairs, right? So, so this, we can still create a document like this that is sort of, you know, you know, we, since we have a rotating chair, and there's new chairs every time, to sort of, here's sort of basically what we do as a committee. But this other thing, I think actually just would take more conversation about what we want it to look like. And maybe that conversation happens in a subcommittee meeting or in a, in a retreat. I mean, it, it seems like we need to sort of be in agreement about what that vision is, I think. Yeah, Dr. Schlickman?
I think some of this may come out of a subcommittee or something like, of that nature, but could be even fit in here, at different periods of the time.
Right.
Uh, it keeps the goals, we're not creating them in the late spring, evaluating them from the year before in November, and then-
Right.
It, it keeps us constantly thinking of the goals during the year and things of that nature. Doesn't have to be a long thing, but it might, out of a subcommittee, uh-
Right. So this is something that has to get done each year. I mean, this is-
Yes.
This can be sort of a standard document that we sort of refer to, but, but what you're talking about, it sounds like it should be something that we are really, each year, thinking afresh about.
Yes.
Okay. Any suggestion for a subcommittee that would be the appropriate, would be curriculum?
The curriculum committee.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we task curriculum, um, subcommittee to begin that process? And then, and I, and I guess make a decision about whether it needs to go to maybe a retreat level at a full committee meeting, or just be discussed.
I, I, yeah, I, I just, I, I like the structure of this, and I think it's a, a nice outline of the things we normally do with these points.
Right, right.
It's, uh, it's a roadmap of where we intend to go. It doesn't seem very, I don't want to use the word controversial, but it just seems to flow with-
Right.
-with, with past practice, so that-
I think it's sort of, you know, reminder of what we're-
What we do, right.
Yeah, and I think this is fine.
Okay.
But you want CIA to-
To come up with, I guess, we need to then talk about the process of what this year's, right? This is, I think, the suggestion, that this year's goals, what's, what we need to see from this year's goal, to, to understand how we're making progress on this year's goals.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I think that's something that CIA should be-
And you, so we should sort of, okay, come up with the process to do this year's goals.
It's what the things, you know, is, you look at each goal, is this one going to be a report? And when is a good time for that report to be done?
Yeah, that's a great idea. And that has to be done each year.
Is it going to be, yeah, and, and it's just, it's a way of making sure that those things are in the calendar, and then that they come up, and we can go, okay, it's time to talk about, you know, whatever.
And once it's codified-
Yeah.
-we all know that it's coming at a certain time.
Coming, so-
Uh, those people that, also, any of the staff, or the superintendent, or anybody that needs to make reports, they, it's, it's not, oh, by the way, Kathy, we need this next Thursday. They know it's coming.
So actually, let me make a suggestion to this calendar, that we add something in this calendar for each year, coming up with that schedule of what, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, uh, and then, but then we, we keep this, we don't throw this away necessarily.
No, no.
Um, I also want to add one thing that Mr. Hainer had suggested, and actually Nancy suggested as well, which is to add in March, as our, as our practice and our, in our procedures, the superintendent progress on goals, that we get a report from that.
Mid-year report.
Mid-year report.
So we can put it in the policy.
So put it, yeah, well, so we, this is, I think this becomes part of policy, right, at some point?
But this is also, it, it's in line with the, the state's evaluation process, that it, it's an informative-
Right.
How's things going? It, I may need some, I need no more time, or whatever. It's, it's informative, but at the same time, informal.
Right, right. Okay, so that would be then, we have that mid-year, and then we have the, the one in September. Is that, does that seem like that's, according with the practice we've done so far, but that seem like what we want? Okay.
And, I also suggested in November, the new goals for the next year are developed after the evaluation, by the end of November. There's flexibility in that. I only stuck it there because we got December packed with budget.
The new goals for the next year are developed in November?
After, we have the evaluation in, in November. This is the issue that I've always had with November.
Yeah.
So you're finishing one, you set the, the, they will be attached to the goals, the district goals that we've had before.
The personal goals, not, the superintendent's goals, not the district goals.
Exactly.
They may, may not be.
Right.
But we state them, we're clear. And it, it, it's that conversation that, that we have together, the one you and I have had individually about, not the substance, but how it's communicated, and aspects of things like that.
Got it.
You know, but I would, you know, the school year started, so you've probably already identified, I mean, you've already probably identified your goals for the year, right? So you've, so it's more-
We identified the district goals-
Right.
-back in June.
Yeah, but even your goals-
Right, this is for the next year, actually. This is for, but this is then jumping in.
Jeff, this is the issue of having an evaluation in November. If we had the evaluation in June-
Yeah.
We, we'd have the new goals for the next year.
Yeah.
The superintendent could set his or her-
Why are we back here again? We don't have accountability data in June, you know?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a strange system.
Someday, we can hope.
We're one of five-
Also, I think it's a little-
No?
It's, it's, it's a little bit odd to kind of, you know, for the school committee to tell an administrator in, in November, in the middle of the school year, we're going to evaluate you on, on these goals.
No, I think, I think the suggestion is, these are the goals then for the after, even-
Yeah, I appreciate that, but that's, but you're a third of the way through the year, right?
But we, we, in September-
Yeah.
-we're evaluating the superintendent on last year's goals.
Right, in November.
We're halfway through the year, starting this year's goals. So there has to be some, to see, either move them so that they're together-
Yeah.
-which there's been resistance since, for six, five years I've been on the committee, or understand that the individual, there has to be some difference, delineation between the district goals and the superintendent's process, whatever it is, something.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman?
Of course there's delineation, but, I mean, we have to be cyclical, and there are two things, two points that we need to always have in mind as a school committee. Point number one is, if we're evaluating the, the school year, the previous school year, we can't do that while we're in the middle of the school year, especially because the accountability data that we want to look at comes after the conclusion of the school year. So that to evaluate the superintendent, or to come to a final conclusion on the goals in June, puts us in a position where we'd be doing it without all the requisite information. Now, let, let me finish. Point number two, in terms of evaluating any superintendent specifically, and this is nothing to do with the current superintendent, it is a structural thing, in that the way almost all superintendent contracts are written, that you normally have a decision point on a renewal year that falls around the end of December. So that we're structuring around those two usual landmarks that, that impact everybody. So that to, what, so that to have a final, we know where we're trying to go, and there are a lot of things that we'll know about in June, and we can plot out some of the goals, but to do, to close the book on it and have anything final on this before we look at accountability data and have all the data we have from the previous school year, does it disservice to us, does it serve, diserves the community, and, and throws out important data that we should be using analytically.
Right.
Now fortunately, we're a high-performing district, so we haven't had any evil surprises over the past couple of years coming through the accountability measures. Things are, you know, and I don't expect to spend a lot of time looking at testing data this year, especially because we're held harmless with the switch over to-
And we have no real-
Uh, to park. But we do want to monitor how we're doing vis-à-vis second language learners, we want to make sure that, that the high-needs population is being served well. It's always been a concern of this committee, to our credit, and we won't really know those results until we get the accountability scores in. So we've landed on sort of this wacky structure. It is not neat, it is not clean. We're, we're doing evaluation to the prior school year in September and October, but it's just the nature of the beast. We're going to be in this situation as long as, and, and I don't see why we keep bumping up against it. Let, let's just realize what we are as a publicly governed district and, and go with the flow.
So actually, can I get clarity from Mr. Hainer about your suggestion, what your suggestion is?
My suggestion is we do-
Is there a change, or?
My suggestion is, one of two, I'll get to that real quick. Mr. Schlickman, we evaluate all our teachers by the end of June.
Yeah.
We do not wait for state's performance, and it's dealing with their, and they still are in their evaluation subsequent years is reflected on the state's performance, which is, makes me a little shaky. We should not be judging our superintendent just on statistical state performance alone. I agree with that. Now getting back to your question that you asked me.
Yeah.
One of two things has to happen. We have to make a distinction, a delineation between the district goals, they may be somewhat, and the superintendent's personal goals.
Right.
They may be reflective. The problem is, we're six months into one district goal, and six months left over a prior district goal by the time we get into, or five months into November. It, it, that's what's caused confusion to this old man each year-
Yeah.
-of which goals I'm evaluating.
So are you suggesting that there, there be a change in the, 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 the magic time, that the superintendent's goals are being evaluated, and the, and magic time that the district goals are being evaluated?
The majority of districts in the Commonwealth do a regular school year evaluation.
I know that, I know.
Okay, so they don't, what I'm saying is, I have no problem with the district goals, they're in a good place.
Okay.
They're in a good place for the upcoming year. And all I'm saying is, if we're going to continue to evaluate the superintendent in November, to allow for the, the state data, I think it's important for us, for the superintendent's personal goals, which is a piece of her, the superintendent's evaluation, not the whole thing, that they be delineated clear. I'm having confusion, I am-
That they be clear, but they still be evaluated in November? So there's not, you're not suggesting time change?
Yes, yes, I'm not suggesting changing.
You're just suggesting clarity with respect to-
Yes.
-but no time change?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that sounds like-
I have no problem with that, as long as we have the superintendent's personal goals-
Personal goals.
Are clear.
For the exact same amount, period of time-
It would be a 12-month period.
-are being evaluated, so the previous year.
Yes.
Okay. Does that seem, are we going?
I mean, you know, it, it is what it is. I mean, if, if, if we're doing this in a piecemeal, piecemeal basis, where there are things we can evaluate in June, fine.
I'm saying doing it in a November call.
Or, or, or to document or whatever, but the, the one thing is, I've evaluated teachers, I've evaluated superintendent, I've evaluated, I've done district evaluations and looked at our goals. They're all different animals. The way I look at a teacher is very different than the way I'm looking at a superintendent, because I've got access to a lot more data, I'm watching a teacher on a day-to-day basis, I know who they are. And generally speaking, the data coming from a classroom is fairly consistent, and if there's something that I'm really interested in, I'm monitoring that across the school year in a much more intimate way than we can as a school committee go deal with any superintendent. So-
It sounds like, Mr. Hainer's suggestion is that we do both evaluations in November, both the district goals and the superintendent's personal goals, and that we evaluate them both in, in, in November, and that the evaluation period be for the previous year-
Yes.
-September through June.
Yes.
Okay. So that sounds good. Okay. So that sounds good. So, okay, is that clarity?
I thought that's what we do.
Yeah, that's what we do. I think.
We do not, I have not seen, for me, a delineation between the district goals and the personal goals.
You want, you want just them to be spelled out.
The personal goals will run from December 1st to the evaluation. The district goals run, we're looking at 2015, 16 district goals for this evaluation.
Right, yeah, right. That's right.
Okay. We should be looking at December 1st to November, personal goals. I do not have a personal goal clear in my mind, personal goals delineated from district goals. And that's, and I'll accept this year. Going forward, I just want to have that delineation, that's all.
So, okay, so, yeah, Dr. Allison Ampi.
I'm sorry for raising my voice.
I'm still confused.
Yeah.
It's, I think, maybe we could bring a copy of the form.
Okay.
And talk, I mean.
And start filling things out.
Preferably fill it in, what the different things are, so we all know what we're talking about.
What I would like is to have a copy of the district goals and the personal goals.
Well, that's, but the form, I'd like the form.
The form is pre-populated, as Mr. Schlickman suggested.
And, yes, that's fine.
That might add some clarity.
With, with the district goals, then I'd like to see those two, because that way I know where everything fits in on the one.
Yep.
And then I can look at the other two.
Okay.
So you're Saturday morning.
That sounds great.
So, refresh my memory, have we ever had a process by which we select personal goals for the superintendent?
I thought the superintendent, I thought.
I thought she selected her.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the whole process.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
The state says that that is to be, the superintendent can offer them to us, a discussion, we have to agree to them. I have no prob, I, the probability of accepting what the superintendent presents to me is very high.
And just for my clarity, I, the superintendent offers them to us in, at the end of September? Or offers them to us last?
No, after the evaluation.
After the evaluation.
That's why I picked the end of November.
Wait, we're talking two different years here. We're getting our years confused. You're talking about the year that we're evaluating.
Yeah, right, right.
And you're talking about the next year.
I'm talking.
So you two aren't.
The, the, the personal goals should be from December to November of the same year that the district goals ran from Ju, July through June.
Yeah.
That's the confusion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I don't necessarily agree with what Mr. Hayner is saying, except to say that I think we need to have the personal goals clearly identified.
Yeah.
And I think his idea of the timing is good.
Yep.
To make a statement about what time period they cover right now, I'm not willing to go there.
Why don't we send this to CIA? Curriculum assessment, to have a meeting to sort of hash out some of this and see if we can get something that makes sense to bring back to us. Okay, so let's do that. So, so you have a lot of work to do, Paul.
Well, that seems to fit into that calendar, the year-long calendar thing. It's the same discussion.
It's the same discussion. Okay, so let's do that, let's come back and look at the calendar again in October, after we've had some of those meetings, for hopefully a final, you know, thing. Is there any other additions, subtractions, comments on the calendar that we'd want to comment, okay?
Just.
Yes, Dr. Allison Ampi.
Budget, so what you've, I'm sorry, I lost the form for a moment.
Yeah, budgets, yeah.
So what you've got is how budget's done it the last couple of years, but that's subject to change, you know, it gets moved around a little bit.
Right.
So I'm fine with this being on here now, but it, once we pass the budget calendar, which we'll need to do fairly soon, we can update this.
Okay.
I would prefer not to see this go into policy, because I think this gets, I mean, the, this, the, I think there can be a reference to a year-long calendar.
Yeah.
But I don't think it should actually be in policy, because like, at least the budget part's going to change year to year. I mean, the exact timing of the difference.
Right.
You might want to use, in policy, just say the current calendar.
Well, yeah, I mean, my, my feeling was that we could send this to policy with a strong caveat, saying, of course, this is subject to sort of shifting around, but if that's not something that we're comfortable with, then we can just, I mean, one of the things we want to do is create a school committee handbook. This kind of thing should be in that.
Yeah.
I think. But with the caveat, you know, it's flexible, for sure.
This is something that we want to have for the public, too. I mean, this is really useful.
Absolutely.
It's just, I don't want it to be put in a place like policy where it's, this is what it will be this year.
Then we have to, right, then we have to change it by.
We want, this is the 2015 or 2, I don't know what the date would be.
1617.
1617.
Great, okay.
End of calendar.
Okay, perfect. And then, and then the next year, they, okay, that's, that sounds great. I like that idea.
Okay.
Yes.
No, I think we're done. I think we, I think we cut this one.
We've got it all.
I think this is cooked.
Beat that one again.
Okay, so on to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of any of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 16188 dated June 9th, 16, in the amount of $592,323.75. Approval of warrant number 16194 dated June 23rd, 16, in the amount of $1,175,592.69. Approval of warrant 16199 dated June 30th, 16, in the amount of $145,837.75. Approval of warrant 16200 dated July 14th, 16, in the amount of $44,386.42. Approval of warrant 17023 dated August 11th, 16, in the amount of $427,972.61. Approval of warrant 17029 dated 8, August 25th, 16, in the amount of $561,249.04. And approval of minutes, regular minutes for June 9th, 2016.
So move.
Well, hold on, sorry, Dr. Allison Ampi?
I said so moved.
Oh, so moved, great.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Dr. Allison Ampi, seconded by Mr. Hayner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, that's unanimous. Okay, subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, and I suspect there will only be a couple of announcements, but let's see, budget?
Budget has nothing to report. We will need to be scheduling a meeting sometime soon to start working on the calendar.
Great. Community relations.
Cindy.
Cindy, right, so she's not here. And I'm on that committee, and we haven't met, so, okay. District accountability, curriculum instruction and assessment.
It looks like we've got some agenda items.
Great. Facilities.
No reports.
No report. Policies and procedures.
It's my intent to have at least one meeting a month. You've already given me some stuff, us, some stuff to work on.
Yes, you want to talk to that matter?
Well, just briefly, we have a document with us tonight on an audit that was done, and it is my intent to meet with the superintendent to develop part of a policy and a staff committee to work on the recommendations from that audit report. It's my hope to have that for us for the next meeting.
School enrollment task force.
October 5th.
October 5th is our.
6:30 in the lions' room.
6:30 lions' room, okay, great. The warrant committee.
Everyone's paid on time throughout the summer.
Great. Any liaison reports? Any additional announcements?
That, I don't know if the superintendent is going to talk to it, Bill Bridges, there's a conference coming up, you all received an invite, I would like to go.
Oh, right.
I'd ask the committee if they would sponsor me and anyone else that would like to go. I think it's a, it looks something, something good.
That sounds great. Do, Mr. Spiegel, do you want to talk to that, the conference?
So, yeah, the MPTE is sponsoring a conference this year called Building Bridges with a, the keynote speaker is Claude Steele, who's the author of Whistling Vivaldi and, among other books. We are also, John Safer is going to be at the conference and on a panel and do a lunch presentation, and Dr. Bodie is going to be a panelist. It's going to be an all-day conference at, in Randolph at Lombardo's, and we're trying to, it's October 7th, which is, it's the Friday before Columbus Day weekend, but looks to be a good conference. We've been planning it.
That book, by the way, is a book that all administrators are reading right now.
Oh, great. Well, that's part of the cultural competency.
Yeah.
Great. So I guess, so Mr. Hayner.
I need a motion for the morning.
Has requested that he serve as our representative from the school committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Dr. Allison Ampi made the motion, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Schlickman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, see, unanimous.
If I may, just like to remind everyone, town night is September 16th, down in the field across from the Boys and Girls Club, fireworks at the end of the night, and town day is September 17th, which is, each year it gets bigger and better. I invite everyone to come.
Another reminder, we have a bunch of, we have an election today, we have another election on the 20th for the Minuteman, and that election is odd by state law, we're only allowed to be open, the polls are only allowed to be open for eight hours, so they're open from 12 to 8, at, for the most part, at people's regular polling places, with the exception of Stratton, which I know, you know, has been under construction.
Does anyone know if we can vote absentee on that? Can we actually?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Any requests for future agenda items at this stage? Okay. Yes, Mr. Schlickman?
I would hope that we can talk about the fiscal impacts of the possibility of an unlimited expansion of charter schools between now and in November.
I think that would be a good one.
Okay, we will, we can maybe invite somebody into, or I mean, I know you're, you know a lot about things, so maybe we can have you to talk to that matter. I know, I mean, it's unfortunate that Ms. Johnson isn't here, I know that there's some other sort of just reports that we need on stuff that's happened at the State House over the summer and spending that's happened over the summer, so hopefully we can get that information soon. We, very soon, will have something by Eileen Woods, we'll meet Eileen Woods, we'll also,